Senator Respecho on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that we adopt the agenda dated November 22, 2010. This version does not have any bills or confirmations on it. We would do that when we get to motions, but I just needed to move an agenda for us to, in order to continue session.
So on that motion then, without any objections, so ordered. I would like to ask Senator Munia Barnes if you can lead us in the prayer. Okay, so, all right, so let me get this straight. Senator Panglinen, will you be able to do that with the prayer? And recitation of Inefresi would be Senator Munia Barnes. And the Guam hymn, can I ask Senator Titigui? And the National Anthem, can I ask Senator Frank Blas? Thank you. So Senator Panglinen, can you please lead us in prayer?
Si Dusmasi, Madam Speaker. Ilanitata leh inya ni Spiritu Santo. Jo Stota mengagiam taluguni para bintegui itetsu ipubliku. Romasi putanti mentras incecegui itetsu ipubliku. Na'iam loquy inasu dani nina para bintegui ititzoumu. Zato du i mana porofan madisiiri guini holum. Nasiguru na mangoskasi kanai mami. Mangoskasi inasu mami. Zaman goskasi kuruson mami. Enau ingaga go para un na'iam na hemplu tai guiyan yon na'iam ni laimu asusu Kristu porofan nu'iam tai manu mulakla guini gitano ni para tasetbi iminaulik itininas danimina ga'hit. Amen. Ilanitata leh inya ni Spiritu Santo. Amen.
Thank you. Senator Munia Barnes, can you lead us in the recitation of Inefresi?
Si Dusmasi. Ginen imastakilu gi nasoko. Imastakulum gi kusonhu. Zani masfigu naninesanahu. Hu fresin maisinzu parilputehi zanu defendi i nengui, i koutura, i lengoi, i ai di zani hanam zani pitanu tamoru. Ni irensoku derechu gi nezu stota. Esti hu afitma gi hilu i Biblia zani bendaro ibandera in Guahan.
The singing of the national, the Guam hymn by Senator Titigui and then the National Anthem by Senator Frank Blas. (Singing) And lo itamoru, bo itanota. Kanta matunamia itoru iluka. Hara i gloria, hara i gloria. Abiba islasen para. Hara i gloria, hara i gloria. Abiba islasen para. To du itempo ipa, hara hita. Zan ginilangin derbendishon. Koncha pili bu, na'fa asta fuhuha. Zuzkote i isman Guam. Koncha pili bu, na'fa asta fuhuha. Zuzkote i isman Guam. Oh, see, can you see? By the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last beating, whose cross-strikes and bright stars through the perilous spire? All the grand thoughts we watched were so gallant each stream. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave through, through the night, that our flag was still there. Oh, see, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? For the land and the free and the home of the brave. Thank you. Si Dusmasi, can I ask the clerk to please take roll?
Senator Tom Ada.
Here.
Senator Viada.
Present.
Senator Uggan.
Senator Blas.
Here.
Senator Cavill.
Senator Cruz.
Senator Espaldon.
Senator Guthards.
Present.
Senator Munia Barnes.
Naga.
Senator Palacios.
Naga.
Senator Panglinen.
Naga.
Senator Respecho.
Naga.
Senator Titigui.
Here.
Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampin.
Present.
Madam Speaker, I wish to report there is a quorum.
Thank you. Recognize the Majority Leader for approval of the Legislative Journal.
Yeah, before that, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Uggan, Senators Paldon, Senators Cavill, and Tenorio be excused from session.
On the motion, without any objections, and so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Under approval of Legislative Journal, I move that we approve the Legislative Journal dated November 12 and 17, 2010, subject to correction.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Same with messages from the Governor of Guam. Madam Speaker, I move that those messages be appended to today's Session Journal.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered.
There are reports of standing committees, and I move the same.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And there are no reports of select committees. So under introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move that Bill Number 492-30 be given its first reading.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, under motions, my first motion is although we didn't have a Committee on Rules meeting, we were in constant communication with all members of the Committee on Rules to ask what bills they would prefer to see on the session agenda. And so having gone through that process and vetting those bills and confirmations out, I'm pleased to support, to present a listing of bills and appointments, and copies of the bills are in the second reading file. And I move that these bills be put on the session agenda. And they have provided each member with a copy of these bills, and they would be posted online for the viewing audience to be able to follow.
Will you then just be calling out each one of them, or do you have copies?
No. Well, they have the, the listing of those bills are, been provided.
Hi.
And so I just make one general motion that we...
I don't have a copy. Can I? One moment.
Tom, she doesn't have a copy. And while you're getting a copy, Madam Speaker, there are other bills that were being requested. However, the Committee on Rules did not receive a committee report for, for those bills. And if in the event we're still in session and we have those committee reports, obviously you, you maintain that the opportunity to go back to motions, provided those committee reports have been filed.
Okay, so Senator, you may proceed then with the bill.
So my motion is that we place Substitute Bill 54, and the, the latest versions of these bills are in the second reading file. Bill Number 306, Substitute Bill 364, Bill 431, Substitute Bill 438, Substitute Bill 442, Substitute, no, sorry, Bill 446, Bill 450, Substitute Bill 461, Bill 463, 466, 467, 473, and 488. That they be placed on the second reading.
Yes, on that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
And that the following appointments be placed in the consent calendar, and then I'll move it to the voting file. But for the consent calendar, Ms. Helen Embredalio to be a member of the Guahan Historic Preservation Review Board, and this is being reported out by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Aviation, Housing, and Recreation with Senator Barnes's committee to confirm. Do we want to do this one by one?
How many do you have?
Just three.
Okay, so we'll do it one, are there different committees then?
Yeah.
Okay, so on the motion to place Helen Embredalio on the consent calendar, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. And then the next one is J. Peter Roberto, Director of Department of Public Health and Social Services, from Senator Frank Uggan's Committee on Economic Development, Health, and Human Services and Judiciary, and with that committee's recommendation to confirm.
So on the motion then, to place Mr. Pete Roberto on the consent calendars, Director of Department of Public Health and Social Services, without any objections, so ordered.
And the third one is Ms. Priscilla Tuncap to be a member of the Civil Service Commission with Senator Palacios Committee on Labor, the Public Structure, Public Libraries, and Technology, with his committee's recommendation to confirm.
So on the motion to place Priscilla Tuncap on the consent calendar as a member of the Civil Service Commission, without any objections and so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Under motions, now that we've, have a second reading file, I make the customary motion that if in the event we get to a bill, and for some reason the sponsor is not yet available or they're requiring additional information, that that bill be, it will not lose its place on the agenda. It just be set aside until such time the sponsor is either present or is ready to present their bill. I make that first motion.
So on that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you. My second customary motion is that any resolutions of commendary or condolence in, commendatory or condolence in nature be automatically adopted to the course of this session, and that all members be co-sponsors, and that the legal counsel work with the sponsor in the preparation of these resolutions or certificates.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask that you yield to Senator Palacios to make a motion to override a veto.
Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
So you see that was... Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 271, understanding the veto of the Governor, that be placed on the voting file for an override. And this has to do with the transfer, of course, of the position of the legal counsel from the Guam Police Department to the Office of the Attorney General, with the understanding, of course, that an MOU would then be executed to continue to provide legal services from the AG back to the Guam Police Department.
On the motion, if you look in your agenda, it's Number 10 on Page 2. So on that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so we're still on motion, so...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have no other motion but under legislative concurrences. I move that the three appointments that we just placed on the legislative concurrents file be moved to the voting file. They are namely Helen Embredalio to be a member of the Guam Historic Preservation Review Board, Mr. J. Peter Roberto to be the Director of Public Health and Social Services, and Ms. Priscilla Tuncap to be a member of the Civil Service Commission.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So we're now in the second reading file. The first bill on the agenda is Substitute Bill Number 54. The author is not here, so we're going to move on to Bill Number 306. The author is Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 306 is a bill authored by Senator Uggan, coming out of my committee, and he'll, he'll be joining us later in this session, but I would like to go ahead and move that Bill 306-30COR be placed in the third reading file. I'll just briefly explain the bill.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 306-30 would zone, enact a zone change for a lot in Baragata which is fronting Route 10 from its current zone of R1 to commercial. Now, Route 10, as you know, is a major thoroughfare that is five lanes wide, and all around, all along Route 10 between the, the two gas stations at the Tri-intersection, all the way up to Manila, basically, to the Chalampago. Along the frontage of that road, you'll have a mixture of some residences, as well as the majority of the area at this time, would be safe to say, is all commercial. And so what this zone change would do is allow the change in that zone from an R1 zone in this section of the area, which is a Lot 1, Block 2 of the, of the property, right next to the, actually, it's two blocks down from my house, that would change from an R1 to an R2, but it's right along the main thoroughfare. During the public hearing, we had no opposition to this testimony. We had the mayor and the vice mayor both appear and testify on behalf of the community that they support the zone change. We also had a couple of neighbors who also came in and submitted written testimony as well, that says that really this would allow the, the property owner to maximize the economic benefits of the property, without really changing the character of the neighborhood since, again, it front, it fronts the major thoroughfare in that area, and that up and down the block, up and down the street from this area, within a half-mile radius, you'll find all, and a large number of the properties already zoned, are commercial. And so on behalf of Senator Uggan, who introduced the bill, I'd like to move then that Bill 306-30 be placed in the third reading file.
On the motion, Senator Titigui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to ask if, I guess who's sponsoring for him or substituting for Senator Uggan, with a question with regards to the Guam Land Use Commission, if there was the opportunity for this individual to go in front of them to lobby for their, the opportunity to change the zoning. I remember going to that public hearing. Unfortunately, I don't have my, you know, notes on, on the public hearing, but I can't recall, and would like to know if that was done.
Senator Panglinen, do you yield to the question?
Yes. During the public hearing, there was no information provided on whether or not the landowner had indeed taken the time to apply at the Guam Land Use Commission. I don't, I, the committee report did not reflect, and no testimony submitted reflected that this had been submitted, this application's change had been submitted to the Guam Land Use Commission.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, are there any, anyone else who'd like to speak? There being none, so on the motion then, to send Bill 306 down to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Substitute Bill Number 364. Senator Panglinen as the primary author.
Si Dusmasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move then that Bill 364-30COR, substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land be accepted.
On that, oh.
And then I'll move to place.
Okay, so on the motion then, to accept, without any objections, so ordered.
I'd like to move then that Bill 364-30COR, substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land be placed in the third reading file. I'd like to discuss the bill briefly, Madam Speaker.
Yes, please proceed.
Si Dusmasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 364 would help resolve an issue between the Guam Raceway Park, which is the LSE of a Chamorland Trust property, that is, in the process of finishing up the development of a raceway facility up on the back Road to Anderson. I think most of us are familiar with that. In the original granting of the, the development of that piece of property to the Guam Raceway Federation by the Chamorland Trust, and of course, then subsequent action by this legislative body to allow $8 million worth of tax credits, or basically, we just, $8 million of development to be utilized by and directed by the Guam Raceway Federation for the construction of that facility. And one of the conditions that was placed in the development of, and the, in the development of the facility was that the Guam Raceway Federation would collect admission taxes, admission tax on events that are held at that facility. There was a time, a short period of time, in which the Guam Raceway Federation had interpreted the law that was passed by the Legislature that said that they would begin collecting the admission tax after the facility is completed. Gida, who administers the tax credit program on behalf of the government of Guam, has interpreted that they are required to collect admission tax on events held there, whether or not the facility is completed or not. And what has occurred, and the admissions fee that is to be collected is $2 per admission head. That was specific to the Guam Raceway facility and events held there. The normal admission tax that we have in statutes for entertainment events is really 10% of the admissions price. So the Guam Federation, Raceway Federation, when it began, or before they began accepting or collecting the admission tax, had some events up there, but at this time, they know how much money they collected, but they don't have a record for how much, how many people came, because some events had, events, for example, admissions of $5 per car, where there are 10 people in the car, or five people in the car. And to collect $2 per each person in the car, when the total admissions was only $5, was more than the admissions cost itself. And so what this bill does is that it would standardize the assessment of the admissions fee or tax at events held at the Guam Raceway Federation, to be consistent with admissions fees and tax charged for all other entertainment events. So if you went to UOG and you paid $20 for a ticket up there, there is an admission tax of $2. So this would make that the same, and treat events held at the Guam Raceway Federation or any other entertainment venue the same way. It's $10 per, per admission. And so what this would also do is it would have the Guam Raceway Federation go back to when the law was enacted, and when they started holding events up there, that they would now take the revenue that they had and just pay a 10% tax on that if they have not paid a tax on those events at this time. And the records are there because they have the financial records that they have submitted of their revenues from events held, and so we would then collect some of the back taxes that would be owed to the government of Guam from those events. And this would assist the Guam Raceway Federation of coming into compliance with the terms and conditions of the original legislation that gave them access to the facility and to the development of the facility through the use of tax credits. It also makes sure that no matter who's sponsoring the event or who's holding the event, that the Guam Raceway Federation as the entity in charge of that venue, that they will make sure that those entities collect the admission tax and pay it. And if they don't, then Guam Raceway Federation will be responsible for paying that, that admission tax on the revenue of the events there. In addition, we will require the Guam Raceway Federation to file a quarterly report listing the event, the organizers, the admissions charged, and the admission tax paid to the legislature, to the Speaker of the Legislature also. We want to continue to track this until all of the development of that raceway facility has been concluded. And that really, Madam Speaker, is, would allow, once again, like I said, the Guam Raceway Federation to make sure that we collect the back taxes, and that there's no dispute now on who's responsible for collecting the admissions and remitting those payments of the admission tax to, of course, the coffers of the government of Guam. And I'd like to ask my colleagues for their support on this legislation.
Rule 364, on the motion, Senator Frank Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I rise in support in general of, of the legislation before us. There is a, a couple of questions that if I can, the, for the author to yield, to, to concerns that I have here. First concern is actually with regards to the reporting of the, of the quarterly reporting to the Speaker of the Legislature, as opposed to reporting to the Chamorland Trust Commission who is in charge of it. I mean, can I, I heard you talk a little bit of it. I'm just wondering whether or not this is just extra paperwork that's coming through here that shouldn't, maybe not necessarily come through here. If we put it to the Chamorland Trust, we give them the charge of, of doing this. Because then my second question, it's actually, my second question is with regards to the requirement of filing a quarterly report, is then what enforcement authority then do we have as the Legislature? If they don't file the quarterly report with us, then what?
Senator, you yield to the questions.
Yes, I will, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the, the reporting submitted to the Legislature is in addition to any other reports required by rule, regulation, or law. So the filing of the fact that the admission, the event was held, admission was charged, and admission is paid, they would still have to file those with the Department of Revenue and Tax and make sure that they pay. The, the reason why I decide, I, and then, any report that they are, is required to them, or of them by the Chamorland Trust is between themselves and the Chamorland Trust. So I wanted to make, from, from my perspective here, I wanted to, to ensure that the Raceway Federation continues with these reports, and so that's why I just, I isolated that report to come to the Speaker, and then, of course, the idea was the Speaker would transmit to the appropriate oversight committee to track that. And since I have oversight over, over land and the Chamorland Trust, this being a Chamorland Trust lease, it would come to my committee. And I just wanted to, to have that mechanism of rather than, than, I'll tell you, it'd be truthful, rather than me chasing them down, they just report to us and we would know. But all the other reporting requirements between themselves and the Chamorland Trust would still have to be filed with them, and this is just on the admission tax to make, for me, to make sure that they are. And then I want to know who's using the facility up there, because, you know, they kind of tell us, oh, we're using it for all the kids and so forth, and if we're finding out that really, it, it isn't really for the kids, then let's just know that, and that we are providing, you know, a nice facility for adults, and there's nothing wrong with that. But, you know, maybe then, because it's now just geared towards adults, maybe we need to think about, or they need to think about how they can contribute more towards the upkeep and the payment and so forth, and things like that, so.
Is that, is that question number one that was answered, or?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. It does help, and this then, actually, the question that I can pose is, with regards to a profferment amendment, is recognizing that, and I, I understand and I recognize the concern that the Oversight Chair has in, in as far as finance, but also to ensure that we're getting the same information all the way around. If they can proffer an amendment that would read, basically, where it says, or where it says before the Speaker of the Guam Legislature, the Chamorland Trust Commission and the Speaker of the Guam Legislature. That way, it's the same report, it goes to two different people, recognizing we've got a copy of the report now, and it's incumbent upon the Chamorland Trust to hold that same report, and we want to make sure this is the same report that we're getting from them. Okay? So...
So on the, on the amendment then, is to add, on line 14, and Chamorland Trust?
No, it's the Chamorland Trust Commission, or with the Speaker of the government and the Chamor, that's right. Make it right after the Speaker.
Okay, so with the Chamorland Trust and Speaker of the Guam Legislature.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, on that amendment, without any objections and so ordered. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Okay, so on the motion then, to place 364 as substituted by the Committee on the Floor to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Bill number, let me see, no substitute, okay, Bill. Number 431, recognize the author, Senator Panglinen.
Madam Speaker, Talu. Bill 431-30COR, I'd like to move that the bill be placed in the third reading file, and then discuss it very briefly.
And you'd like to discuss it?
Yes.
Please proceed then.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 431 could be labeled a companion bill to an earlier piece of legislation that this body passed, that would assist the ability of the government of Guam to greatly enhance, I don't think it's just going to assist, I think it's going to greatly enhance the ability of the government of Guam to attract additional health insurance carriers that may have an interest in serving Guam, who's, but for the lack of information, have not decided to make any serious efforts to studying the Guam market. Insurance is a business that is based upon history and the future. History in that what you can do in the future, your ability to operate economically and profitably in the future, is dependent upon the history. And that history is usually utilization data and cost data of the group that you're going to be providing insurance for. So earlier in this term, the Legislature passed a bill that would require the collection of utilization data, and we outlined the type of data that we want, that is useful in the development of health insurance products and health insurance program. So if you wanted to insure a group, you wanted to get their history to predict what you want to offer them in the future. And so we outlined those specific data in the manner and the ways they're going to be given and reported to us, to receive them for use by our Gov-Guam Health Negotiating Committee. And it was always our intention, and it was pretty clear what our intention was, that that information will now be used by the negotiating committee in the development of the request for proposal, to seek these health insurance carriers to come in, so that we don't have to have people like yourself having to self-medicate themselves with massages at this time, that you can build that into the rate, into the service. And so, Madam Speaker, when we did that, we passed the law. The Attorney General came back and through some reading of the law, he's saying, all right, you have all this, but you really can't release the information to these health insurance carriers, even though the intent of the Legislature was clear, and even though I believe that we could. But rather than argue about it and make it subject to challenge, should we move forward in developing this data and releasing this data, let's just be very clear with it. So this is the companion legislation to that, and the change that is being made in the law is that the detailed claims utilization and cost information required by 4302G, which was the earlier law that was passed, which shall be provided to current and prospective health insurance carrier as part of the invitation to bid for coverage to Gov-Guam employees and retirees. And we have, and many of us have talked to health insurance carriers and companies, both on island and off island, they're saying, we would seriously take a look at the Guam market if we knew what your experience was, and if we knew what your cost was. And so what this does, it allows us then to share that data, the utilization cost, and the cost information, and the cost of those services with these health insurance carriers, so that they can then decide and develop and design health insurance plans to offer to the government of Guam employees. And by doing this, we believe that we will have greater success in attracting some carriers to come back into the Gov-Guam health insurance market. There was a time, of course, as we know, when we had three health insurance carriers, we had four health insurance carriers that were willing to take that risk of servicing the, the Gov-Guam health insurance market, providing health ser, health insurance services to our retirees and our active employees and their families. And because of market changes, we've seen a decrease in the number of participating carriers. And when these carriers exited the market, in order for them to come back in, they're saying, we need some better data, we need to know what's happening in that, in that group, in order to make some kind of educated decision and underwriting risk based on good concrete data for us to participate in the market. And so this makes it very clear then, that we are gathering the data, we are gathering the cost information, and that this will be provided to interested parties to great, give them greater certainty that what they're guessing at has some basis of historical fact, and will allow them to then make decisions on profit margins, on, on design of the plans, et cetera, and then on costing all of that, based upon the expected utilization of the different services that will be covered under these health insurance program, and allow them to participate in the plan. And so, Madam Speaker, I ask for all of my colleagues for their support, and of course, I'd like to move that, that yourself be added as the second co-sponsor on this bill.
On the motion, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Titegri, on the motion.
Madam Speaker, once again, you know, for the indulgence of the last speaker, of a question that I have, if you would yield to a question.
Senator, do you?
And I, the question is, you know, much research, I know, has been done into this, and we all remember the Guam Memorial Hospital Health Care Plan, the situation that went in, and trying to find different avenues of providing excellent health care at the same time, the premiums be at an affordable cost. In this situation, Madam Speaker, the change of law that we're going to make, make a new direction in, if there was enough data or research done on other states that actually have this type of exposing the, the, I would say, the carriers' cost, not the cost, but the carriers', how would you say?
Claims utilization and cost.
Yeah, disclosure of their claims details to their competitors. How many states allow this? Have then, then ever been a research data information on this? Because this is quite substantial and changing.
Senator Panglinen?
There, this is pretty common practice, that the data of the group belongs to the group. So this is our group, and this is the utilization, and this is how much you're, we're paying for the cost of providing these services for our, our group, the government of Guam. And so even the federal government still allows, for example, the federal government to come in and, and review the books, and ensure that what they're charging and what they're paying is consistent with what the plans that they're offering. So I, I think that, from what I, I used to work in, in the health insurance industry 20, 30 years ago, and it was not uncommon for us, for example, if we're going to bid on a market, or in a company and provide them with a plan, that we ask the company to provide us the utilization data, and their loss ratios in, in some instances, what their, the current, and we'll, we'll determine the loss ratios ourselves, but they tell us, this is the utilization data, this is how much they're being charged, and this is the number of groups, this is how many we have enrolled, this is our total enrollment, or total population. And so even back then, it was not uncommon, and it was, it was a practice that, I usually would not go in and try to rate and provide, and bid on a market without knowing the history of that market itself. So from my own personal experience over the years, as, as a health insurance executive, you know, 20, 30 years ago, that's not uncommon, and I don't believe that this practice is uncommon in the industry, that the group has access to that information, and has a right to use that information, to ensure that they get the best cost, and the best participation, and the best choices for its employees in enticing other health insurance companies to come in and be part of the offering of different health insurance products and plans.
Thank you for, for that information. I'm still quite unclear that the information given to the certain amount of group, which is currently being done now, this allows for other competitors to view that same, those same time itemized details and information used, and this is something quite different. When, as a group, individual group that are, you know, in every department and agency in the government, to be able to see that information is brought to them, but to be able to be open about it and provide that information for everyone to view, so this would stay within the group, this information that you receive from any insurance company who is bidding, and their, I guess, their, you know, secret recipe, like Colonel Sanders would say, and how they calculate, would only be to that individual group that decides which health insurance company to, that fits best for, as far as premiums being lower, right?
Senator, do you yield to that question?
What this does is, it gives the information on the utilization of the services, and the cost that the government of Guam paid for those services, available to people who want to bid on providing those services to the government of Guam. So if health insurance company A is now, is now the provider of health insurance services to the government of Guam, and health insurance company A, all we're asking is for aggregate data. We're not asking for how much money did you, how much did Tan Maria use for her, for her services. We're asking for the group data. So we had this many hospitaliza, days of hospitalization. This group, the entire Gov-Guam, we provided hospitalization services for our group at, you know, 3,000 hospital days. And this is how much we paid, we paid five million dollars for that hospitalization days. So it provides the aggregate data, not the individual, specific data, and, and so it does not compromise, the original bill that we had also required that the information and the data to be provided will ensure that it's compliance with the HIPAA regulations of ensuring the pri, the privacy of the patient. But this is in aggregate numbers for the type of services provided and the cost of those services. It does not require for, for, for example, when, when you go to the hospital, we all know this, and you get, go to the health insurance, and your health insurance pays for that, the health insurance company has a rate that it negotiates with the hospital. So if I went to GMH on my own, I would pay a thousand dollars for emergency room. When a Gov-Guam employee goes to the hospital, they get charged that thousand dollars, but the health insurance company, because it is able to provide so many number of, of days of, of hospitalization, ER visits, they may get a discounted rate. And so it doesn't ask that, okay, your discount at GMH is 50%, it doesn't ask for that information, it just asks for how many, how, what was the total cost of that visit, and so forth. So there, the proprietary information, the contract amounts, that it is able to negotiate between the different doctors and the different other providers of services, such as lab and radiology, becomes only aggregate data and not proprietary data that, that will tell you what's their contract with these institutions and so forth. So it really is aggregate data to be able to make a determination, how much is it costing us to provide these services to, to this population? And can somebody come in and do it cheaper, because they're going to be able to negotiate a different contract rate with this hospital, or they're going to put in a certain plan that's structured towards preventive side, and they're going to put people through a preventive healthcare program that would lower the utilization rate and all that? So they just know what the aggregate costs are, what the aggregate benefits are, and then they can design their, their health insurance product pursuant to how they run their business, what their typical profit margins are, what their typical contract rates are, et cetera, et cetera.
Senator Titegri?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Mr. Speaker, for that information. Thank you.
On the motion, recognize Senator Palashis. Senator Palashis, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill. From my understanding, this bill just actually adds clarity to the, what are involved and the cost of claims of expenditure by the insurance companies. And the, ultimately, of course, the consumers will benefit by increased knowledge of what really are the services provided by these insurance agencies, and what are the services that cost them more, so that we can calculate that, and we can see whether indeed the premium is reasonable, or they're just not, or they're misrepresented. Madam Speaker, during the last campaign, there was claim of a, a false claim of loss, when in fact, I think, there was a gain, but I'm not going to get into that. The fact of the matter is that the claim has been challenged. And with this, it will put clarity, and I support this, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palashis. On the motion, Senator Guthurts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. I think this bill is very important, because this lack of information has been one of the reasons that potential health insurance companies have not participated in responding to requests for proposals to cover government retirees and active government employees and their family members. In addition, I believe this bill will be a wonderful companion bill to the Health Insurance Reform Bill that I have introduced, and which we had a hearing on last week, and I'm hoping will come up during the December legislative session for consideration. This bill will contribute to transparency in data, mass data, that's important for the community to have access to, as well as potential companies interested in participating in government health insurance plans. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Guthurts, on the motion. Anybody, anybody else who would like to speak? Okay, there being none, then, on the motion to send Bill 431, the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Thank you. Bill number 438-30 as substituted, I recognize the author, Senator Panglinen.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 438-30COR substituted by Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land. Be accepted?
On the motion then, to accept, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It's just, I'd like to move that Bill 438-30 as substituted by Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land be placed in the third reading, and I'd like to discuss it very briefly.
You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 438, I think is going to be supported definitely by the incoming administration, because it is for more transparency and clarity. The process right now, Madam Speaker, for the determination of how much Section 30 revenues will be requested by the administration for the purpose of budgeting in the annual fiscal year budget passed by this Legislature, is completely within the administration, and we are not disputing that they have a right to that. But what has occurred, Madam Speaker, in the past, is that all of the process for the in the past is that all of the process for the calculation of how much revenues shall be requested, and remember, this is an advance, so when we request for the Section 30 revenues, our request is usually for the next year's revenues that will be paid lump sum at the beginning of the fiscal year. And then, at the end of the fiscal year and into the next fiscal year, the government of Guam goes back and works with the federal government and reconciles the money we got versus the money we should get. And we really didn't have much of a problem in the past, but lately, we've seen that maybe we're playing, kind of playing some games with these numbers. And what has resulted, and our experience has been, and really wasn't even brought out to light until our committee took a real active process in determining what that Section 30 revenue request should be. We call them the cover over payments. And we found, we were able to find, which was not general knowledge, that the governor had actually requested Section 30 revenues that were above the expected amount, to the tune of $20 million, for example, in one request. And so when we got the advance, we took the money and we spent it all. When we reconciled, they told us, we overpaid you by $20 million, and therefore, you have to pay us back that 20. And then they just decreased then, the next year's fiscal cover over payment by $5 million. So it, we saw that how this kind of provides the governor with some kind of, you know, process of playing, and we thought, okay, maybe it's always a mistake. Well, so we did that one time, and then we find, in the process again, that they did it a second time. When revenues were maybe not too good, they just asked for more money, and somehow, we got more money, and somehow, we have to pay it back again, which means that the legislature in that next fiscal year now has less revenues to appropriate, because we have to now pay back the federal government. So what this bill would do is no later than 50, required executive branch that no later than 15 days after the end of the third quarter of each fiscal year, which is typically the time we begin the process of certifying the request for a cover over, that the governor shall make available and report to the Speaker and the Office of Finance and Budget, their correspondence between the United States Department of Treasury, which is in charge of the cover over payments, the Department of Interior, which certifies those payments to be paid to the government of Guam, and the Office of Insular Affairs, which is the office within the Department of Interior that, that pays it over, or its successor, and with the new Republican Congress, they just might restructure the Office of Insular Affairs, but there'll be a successor office. And any other entities related to, and, to the prior and future fiscal year estimates and reconciliation of the duties, fees, and taxes, also referred to as Section 30 funds, be remitted prior to the commandments of the forthcoming fiscal year. So when the governor's doing these estimates and so forth, the basis of his estimates will be shared with the legislature, basically. So he's now required to, to give us copies of that. And then the report shall also contain a forthcoming fiscal year Section 30 cash advance report. This is how much the governor is going to ask the Secretary of, of the Department of Treasury to remit to the government of Guam. And then prior to the issuance of the report outside the subsection B, BBMR, Department of Revenue, shall present to the Special Accounting Service the information and the data used to develop the report, and then the Special Accounting Service shall evaluate it, certify by the majority of the members the concurrence of this Section 30 cash advance request, so that we don't end up into this, having to repay that, and then have our budgets all not reflect the true, true operating costs, because we're operating with inflated revenues. And then 15 days after the receipt of any United States Department of Treasury warrants, that means that's the actual cash that is issued to the government of Guam, that pursuant to the Section 30 of the GAICAT, the governor then shall make that available to the Speaker of the Legislature in Guam and the Office of Finance and Budget. And, and again, this is all with regards to ensuring that we have transparency, we're all operating from the same base and, and information with regards to the Section 30 revenues and the development of the budget, accepting the, the request and, and working from those requests. And then another section of the bill would also require the governor to send down 15 days after the end of the third quarter, and this is in anticipation of the adoption of the budget, again, his provision for income tax refunds. So we can take a look at what the history is, and the legislature's Office of Finance and Budget and its Committee on Appropriations will be able to use that information in the development of the budget. So the two areas covered here are, of course, the Section 30 revenues and income tax provisions, all for greater transparency and cooperation in the development of the budget, which will help everyone, both the legislature and the administration, in arriving at a true number that will allow us to allocate the resources of this government of Guam that are real, that have been tested, that have been verified, and that have been attested to by independent eyes that are not political, because that's what the Special Accounting Service, Special Economic Service is, consists of. Both people that the governor has confidence in with regards to his appointment, because directors and that serve on that, and our career apolitical government civil service employees, such as our directors and controllers and financial managers, who have no political vested interest in telling us that this is the true picture, these are our true costs, these are our true revenues, and we marry the policy with, with the, with the politics, and hopefully come up with something. That we've seen over the last couple of years have developed into a more smooth and more transparent development of the fiscal year budget for the government of Guam. Thank you ver, and thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I'd like to ask that Senator Tina Munya Barnes be the second co-sponsor.
She beat, yes, thank you. On the motion, without any objections, ordered. Senator Munya Barnes on the motion.
Sis Massey, Madam Speaker, and for giving me the opportunity to speak, and thank the author of the legislation for making me a part of his co-sponsorship, and thanking him for a very good bill with this Bill 438. As you know, Madam Speaker, when we deliberated on the 2011 budget, working closely with the author, who's the appropriations chair and also working with the special, the SAS and the SES, which is the Special Accounting Services within the government, and also the SES, which is the Special Economic Services, which encompasses the, the expertise in the financial arena within the government of Guam, and having this bill put in place and, and bringing all the data that is needed for these agencies, you and I know that this year's fiscal budget for 2011, instead of taking 60 or 90 days, literally took one week after all the hard work was done. And I just want to take the time to thank the appropriations chair for, for having that smooth transition and, and making it easier on his colleagues for presentation to, to the body when it went into its hole. This bill, as presented before us on Bill 438, is, is truly bringing accountability and transparency to the process, bringing all the data that is needed to come together to work with these groups, who, who literally is the finance technique experts within the government, to make sure that the, the, the numbers that truly come to be presented in front of us are really actual, not having to worry every year when we, we look for funding sources out there as an august body that we have to worry about taking from Peter to pay Paul. So again, Madam Speaker, I truly want to thank the author of this legislation. I also want to thank him for making me a part of this co-sponsorship and speaking on this matter, and also asking my colleagues to support this effort, as it truly is a win-win for the community. So thank you, Sis Massey.
Thank you. Senator Barnes on the motion. Senator Taitigui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Well, I guess, Madam Speaker, it would be time to say a few nice words about some of my colleagues. And one of my individuals that I've admired so much, especially in the work he's done, is the good speaker, the author of this bill. He knows that I've taken a great interest to find out how it works, you know, how the budget is balanced, what we have to look forward to, the obstacles that place before him. But one thing I've noticed is that he's very diligent in providing other people to come forth in a table and sit and discuss things and bring all those involved ideas and plans and situation. He's never left anyone out. He's always brought people in. He brings that in, and transparency is, of course, is a great asset of his. But most of the, most importantly, what I admire him so much is his ability to try and be accurate, cross his Ts and dot his Is. And that is the true sentence of this author. Of course, this bill will help him provide, to do even a better job. He does one right now. But even so now, this will give him what he needs to ensure that when there are shortfalls, that he's able to bypass that and ensure that there will not be any shortfalls, because I was accurate and I brought more people to the table, everybody who was involved. And I know that he is currently working with the current, the newly elected administration to, to just see that that happens, so that it is a true, true and easy transition for the people of Guam, because it's the people of Guam that have to go at the end of the year with shortfalls, when they've already allocated money for certain areas, critical areas. And this is something that's very disheartening. Now, I must admit, I've not always voted, you know, in favor of some things. I maybe thought is appropriations to certain areas more than the other side, but what he, he balanced, and that's what was important. And these are the tools that's going to be needed for the individual handling this, this committee. And it's done very well right now, and I'm sure that it's going to get even better. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Taitigui. We'll have more time to do just that again in December, so. But it's always good to hear it. On the motion, Senator Rispichu, you recognize.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm always in favor of, of bills that propose to give the Special Economic Services or the Special Accounting Services more responsibilities, because that means that, that this author, particularly the current appropriations chairman, will continue to utilize the, the vast amount of, of expertise that are classified individuals. As he pointed out, it's a law that was designed to, to de-politicize the, the way we budget for the government of Guam. I want to say that I rise in full support of this bill, recognizing that in the incoming, the upcoming legislature, the same gentleman would be the incoming appropriations chair, and I want to just caution the body that the incoming administration, when, when Governor Lake Calvo was chairperson of the Office of Finance and Budget and the Committee on Appropriations, I believe it took him about 107 days to convene this very group. And, and he only convened it because I had to, every single day, in every single correspondence I wrote, I had to have a box there that highlighted the number of days he has yet to convene the Special Economic Services, Special Accounting Services pursuant to that law. Now, this law was something that was created in statute by Cleo Moreland when he was a member of the legislature. As you know, the current BBMR director helped craft this. And so when the legislature changed hands from that current legislature to a succeeding legislature, still maintained by the same party, for some reason, those duties and responsibilities highlighted by previous speakers, duties and responsibilities of the SES and the SAS were repealed. And so you had a Office of Finance and Budget, but no real mandate or statutory requirements other than to produce a budget for the government of Guam. And so when you had a succeeding chairman of OFB that just had a statutory requirement to produce a budget, there was no mandate to provide a check and balance to the governor's budget bill. And so we saw, Madam Speaker, that when the governor proposed revenue estimates, that it was not at all challenged by that legislature under that appropriation chairman's leadership. Simply what was done is they just took the bill, made copies, had a series of public hearings, and brought the exact same bill to the floor, and sometimes, because they couldn't make the tough decision, would actually pass the bill chapter by chapter. I mean, I've seen it all. In my short time in the legislature, almost eight years now, I seen it all. I seen where the budget was passed by chapters, because education is a top priority, and so they passed Chapter 1 without even adopting the revenue projection. And then knowing that education takes up a huge chunk of the budget, then they passed Chapter 2, Chapter 3. When they came to Chapters 4 and 5, and they theoretically ran out of money, they just authorized the governor, I think in one fiscal year, there were 30-some departments and agencies that weren't funded, so they just authorized the governor to use transfer authority to figure it out. And so I rise in support of this bill, to really also reflect on how this budget process has evolved over the years, particularly under this current chairman's leadership. And I'm just grateful that our speaker, Panglinen, has really utilized, I mean, it didn't take him a day over his chairmanship to convene this group. And the feedback I got from these classified employees is that, you know, between him and the Office of Finance and Budget under Mr. Chris Bedasi, they've really incorporated the whole spirit of what that SES and SAS is supposed to do. And as a result, we've seen budgets that were passed in record time, but not only passed in record time, but budgets that really reflect the true fiscal condition of our government of Guam. So I want to rise and, and register my support for Bill 438. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Rispichu. On the motion, are there any other speakers? There, yes, I'm going to ask the author if he would like to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to, to thank my colleagues, of course, for all their kind comments. But it really has been the collective effort. I mean, the body passed a policy that I saw was good, that I wanted to fulfill, not only the letter of the law, but the spirit of the law. And, you know, one of the first hires that I, I did when I finally was accepted as the chairman of the appropriations was this Office of Finance and Budget Director. And I tell you that, you know, we've been lucky. The, I remember in the discussion with, with the public auditor, and, you know, the public auditor sits on the Special Economic Service Group, and she asked me, she goes, "Where did you get your Office of Finance and Budget Director, Mr. Bedasi?" Because we are really, you know, pleased with the work, his attitude, his knowledge. He goes, "I look for those kind of people at the Office of the Public Auditor, but I haven't been able to hire some of them." You know, and I told her, I said, "Well, you know what? You know, Madam Public Auditor, I did exact, I, I just told Chris, I said, 'I want you to work for me. I promise to pay, to pay you 50% on your making now. I want, I promise that you will work twice as hard, but I promise you that you will learn and you will serve the people of Guam to the best of your ability, and that you will have real input into this process.'" So I cut his salary by 50%, and I make him work twice as hard, and he's very happy.
I want to hear you.
And so I said, "You want me to find somebody like that for you, Madam Public Auditor?" She has some very good people there as well, I want to say. But it really, literally, that's exactly what happened with that hire. I mean, Mr. Bedasi could have gone on and stayed on in the private sector, made udu's and udu's of money. But he was ready to make a contribution, and he was looking for an opportunity. And I was looking for somebody who was ready to make an op, a contribution and give him that opportunity. So we've been very fortunate. And of course, you know, Senator Rispichu in mentioning the, the box, I remember that box that he had. I think PDN then took his idea and put the, the status of the hospital beds at GMH on the front page. front page, because from his, because they used to get a letter, a copy of all of his letters, and in there is that, "This many days," you know. But just the participation, when you ask people to participate, they do. And, you know, Senator Ada, I mentioned, when he first came in, I don't, he used to beat me to the public hearings. Senator Titekwe was at the special accounting and special economic service meetings. But everybody participated in this whole process. We're not perfect. We still continually refine our processes and our systems. We missed the revenue projections last year, because some assumptions that we made did not come forth. But by ensuring that everyone, both the executive branch and the legislative branch, participated in the development of that, knowing and understanding where all of the issues are, when we missed that budget, we didn't have threats of payless payday, or 32-hour work week, or, you know, we got together and said, "This is how we structured it. Let's make the adjustments." And we got the cooperation of the Bureau of Budget and Management and DOA, and we all worked together and we made those adjustments. So, even when we missed revenue projections, we were still able to provide the services to the people of Guam without any kind of real heartache and hardship and threats of, you know, payless paydays and things like that. So, it has been inclusive. And so, I want to thank my colleagues for their support, and we will continue to work and refine this system and these processes, because it will make things easier for everyone else that comes after us. And I think when we systemically fix these kind of things through changes in our system, they survive us. They survive me not being on this floor, you know, next year or whenever. And therefore, the work can continue in the same manner, uninterrupted. And I think that that, to me, is some of the contributions we've all made in this issue, in these manners and in these issues. And I do want to thank my colleagues for their support, and of course, for their participation and cooperation. It's just my say.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. Then, on the motion to send Bill 438 as substituted by the committee, the third reading file, without any objections, it's ordered. Substitute Bill Number 442, recognize the author, Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill 442-30 COR as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land be moved to the third reading file, and I'd like to discuss.
You may continue.
Madam Speaker, Bill 442 actually is a bill which would authorize the Port Authority of Guam to enter into a lease agreement with a company called Cemento and Micronesia for a term of up to 30 years. Now, this bill is necessary, because right now, right now, the Enabling Act of the Port Authority of Guam only authorizes it to enter into lease agreements for a period of up to five years. Any longer than that will require approval by the legislature. So, by virtue of Bill 442-30 as substituted, we are then give the legislature, the bill then seeks to provide the authorization of the Port Authority to approve the leasing of land to the Cemento and Micronesia for a period up to 30 years. In addition to that, Bill 442 puts in and requires that the real estate taxes, that the lessee shall pay for all the real estate taxes, property, and improvements pursuant to applicable laws. Bill 442 is really very important, because, first of all, it will provide the first competing cement supplier on Guam, which is going to be very important for this forthcoming military buildup. In addition, this company, Cemento and Micronesia, will also be providing cement to, and will provide the, basically, the input into other cement products, concrete products and whatnot, throughout Micronesia. Now, as the company starts up, they were bullish, and although they only had a license for five years for the property, they went ahead and embarked on a $12 million investment, initial investment, to build their plant, to get it designed, and to begin construction. And so, they have come then, the port has come to the legislature, asking that the authorization be given to lease the piece of property that Cemento and is located on and is building its facility on for a period of up to 30 years. So, it's really a relatively simple bill, and that gives the authorization to go up to 30 years. So, with that, Madam Speaker, I urge my colleagues to please support the bill and vote yes on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tom Ada. Anybody wishing to speak on the motion?
No. No, Madam Speaker. There being no other comments, I guess I would ask that the bill be sent down to the voting file as is. Thank you.
Okay. Without any objection, motion carries. Bill is sent down. We are now on Bill... The author of 446 is asked to just move that bill until she gets the information needed to speak on it. I have Bill Number 461, which is Senator Judy Guthers.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 461-30 is an act that, in order to establish a classified, long-term, votes to create a community partnership council for the purposes of identifying sites in each municipality in Guam and funding for the construction of multipurpose centers for every village. This act shall be known as the Community Partnership Act of 2010. Madam Speaker, Bill 461-30 seeks to ensure, through proper planning and execution, that every village on Guam is earmarked for the construction of a multipurpose center by the year 2020, to serve as a central point for village functions and other requested usage, and as the primary gymnasium of the village, and when necessary, to be used as a typhoon emergency center for the village. Each municipality in Guam has been promised, either through well-intentioned legislation or initiatives, gymnasiums that would serve as sports and recreation centers, and meeting spots for community functions. But due to limited funding, these plans are often placed on the back burner. While some communities are able to boast of a beautiful gymnasium, others are left wanting on Guam. In order to address this disparity, and to ensure that every municipality in Guam is outfitted with a gymnasium, community facility, and when necessary, a typhoon emergency center, a council by virtue of this bill would be created to develop viable and feasible funding sources and design plans. The council shall be comprised of representatives from the Mayor's Council of Guam, the Department of Education, the Guam Homeland Security Office of Civil Defense, the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, and the Guam Economic Development Authority, the Chamaral Land Trust Commission, and two members from the community at large appointed by the governor of Guam. It is important to note that the mayors will indeed lead the workings of this council, as they are the experts with regards to their needs of their respective villages. On October 20, 2010, a public hearing was held to receive testimony on Bill Number 461. And I want to thank Sandra Barnes for holding the hearing through her committee. Public comment reflected overwhelming support for the measure. Mayors from seven separate municipalities and the executive director of the Mayor's Council of Guam expressed genuine and unbiding support for this bill, and also gave recommendations to improve the proposed legislation. The measure was marked up by the committee to incorporate the concerns of the mayors via substitute Bill 461, which is now before you. I want to thank the good chairperson, Sandra Barnes, again, for holding the hearing and reporting the measure out of the committee. And of course, I request that she be added as the second sponsor of this measure, if there's no objection.
Thank you. On the motion, are there any objections? No objection, motion carries. Thank you, Senator Guthers. You can proceed.
Thank you. Now, the changes to the bill based on the hearing that's reflected in the bill before you as substituted includes the following. First, to substitute the version that was amended to include a broader participation by members of the municipal planning councils, I added a provision for municipal subcommittees on line 19 of Page 3, Section 40202.1. This is called municipal subcommittees. Municipal subcommittees, individual municipalities, also known as villages on Guam, shall appoint a subcommittee from among its municipal planning council, with one representative serving as the chairperson, who shall also serve as a liaison between the community and the CPC, the Community Partnership Council. Also, on Page 4 of the bill, line 19, we added Item I to Section 40202, membership of the council to add the Chamaral Land Trust Commission. The mayors wanted to include the Chamaral Land Trust Commission as a participant of the Community Partnership Council, the CPC. Also, we also wanted to take away any possible turf wars among the mayors, and gave the Community Partnership Council the right of first refusal on line 7 of Page 6. It reads, excuse me, "For the purposes of the location of a multipurpose center, when property is identified, the mayor of each respective village shall have the right of first refusal for said property, provided that it is in the inventory of the government of Guam or listed as a parcel or parcels in the inventory of the Chamaral Land Trust Commission." We also gave the mayors the authority to change the sequencing of the facilities to make it a north, central, south rotation for the construction of these facilities when the facilities can be constructed. On line 10 of Page 7, and it reads, "The Community Partnership Council shall also incorporate a sequencing formulation at the discretion of the CPC for the programming of the construction for multipurpose centers in each village that takes into account a fair rotation of northern villages, central villages, and southern villages." The mayors also wanted to ensure whatever's planned is for hardened facility, which is indicated in line 16 of Page 7, which says, "Designs considered shall be for hardened facilities able to withstand typhoon-strength winds." And the collateral equipment and future staffing and cost considerations also would be included in the planning. So, the language added was on Page 8, beginning on line 2, which says, "To include necessary collateral equipment to ensure a fully operational facility upon completion of construction." Section 40206.1, maintenance, staffing, projections, and review of existing village facilities. The Community Partnership Council, as part of its planning process, shall also take into account the maintenance, staffing, needs, and future projections for the upkeep of the newly-constructed facilities, as well as the CPC shall, at its discretion, conduct a review of existing village facilities and make recommendations on retrofitting or expanding the purpose and service of each facility in the respective municipalities of Guam. So, in summary, Madam Speaker, the purpose of this bill really is for this new council called the Community Partnership Council, inclusive of our mayors and other officials, do an assessment of the existing facilities in each of the 19 municipalities of Guam, and to make recommendations to this legislature within 180 days of their findings and recommendations for new facilities and/or retrofitted facilities, inclusive of any maintenance costs that may be involved, and any additional personnel costs that may be involved. The goal is that, with the plan coming from the mayors themselves and those working with the mayors, that this legislature will finally have a plan that we can look at and adopt, hopefully, as a master plan for village facility enhancements. And our goal would be to put these facilities in place by the year 2020. As you know, right now, the facilities in the villages are uneven. Some villages have facilities, some villages don't. We are getting constant requests here from different mayors to help them build facilities in their respective villages. And as author of the bill, with my co-sponsor, Senator Barnes, our thinking is that we really need to know what are the needs. And I think the best folks to tell us what the needs are are the village leaders themselves, including the mayors, the mayor council, et cetera, et cetera. So, I would like to ask my colleagues to join us in supporting this bill. We're not requiring any funding at this point. The Mayor's Council shall serve as a secretariat for the citizens' council, the community council, created by this bill. And they will also, as part of their mission, help to identify potential sources of funds. And that's why we included various government agencies as members of the council, who might be in a position to help us locate and identify funds for future facilities. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move the bill down to third reading.
It's moved already. Any others wishing to speak on the motion? If not, the motion to move it down to the voting file, no objection, motion carries. I want to apologize to this august body. As I was going down the list with the speaker, I did not see that Bill 450 was the bill that was supposed to be next. And I'm going to ask Senator Panglinen. 450, we go back to Bill Number 450, as authored by Speaker Ben Panglinen. You recognize Speaker Ben.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 450-30 LS be placed in the third reading file, and we briefly discuss it.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 450 is almost a technical amendment to an earlier statute that was passed, which restructured the investment vehicles available to the investment managers of the government of Guam retirement program. We allow the government of Guam retirement program to expand the range of permitted investments in fixed-income securities to those covered in the Barclays Capital U.S. Aggregate Bond Index. So, there's this index, and within this index is a whole list of securities that comprise the index. So, if you wanted to hedge your bet against one single sector, you would buy this index, of which has many different companies in it. And you would then spread your risk among all these companies, so that if one company has a down year, the other company has an up year, and instead of buying those individual companies, you buy the index itself. And so, we allowed that to move forward. There's also, within this index, the securities issued and guaranteed by these government-sponsored enterprises, such as Freddie Mac and Frannie Mae. And that the original intent was to allow the companies to buy these fixed-income securities that are within the index. But not every company is a government-sponsored entity, or is backed by the full faith and credit of the United States. And so, this would allow the purchase of these individual companies on an individual basis, of Freddie Mac and Frannie Mae, and place them on par as an investment vehicle with obligations of the United States government, as it was backed by its agencies and instrumentalities to the extent that the debt obligations issued by such entities receive favorable treatment afforded. afforded to U.S. agencies by U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission. And so what this allows is that these two entities, being the fact that while they may be private corporations, for all intents and purposes, the debt issued by these corporations received the full faith and credit backing of the government of Guam. And we saw that occur during the recent housing crisis. Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae, of course, issue mortgages. And when we had the collapse of the mortgage-backed securities market and Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae lost significant amounts of money, the federal government stepped in and made whole all of the investors that purchased the securities of Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae. So in effect, what we saw was that even though these are private corporations and even though the government technically does not back the securities issued by these two organizations, that in practice, it does. And how do we know that? Because it does so, and it has done so, and it just did so in the most recent housing crisis. So what this allows is that, again, that the retirement fund investment managers can purchase these securities, which are part of this index, as separate and individual investment vehicles rather than just purely as part of the index. So that the debt securities issued by Federal National Mortgage Association or Federal Home Mortgage Loan Corporations that are backed by the pools of mortgage loans and guaranteed as to the timely repayment of principal and interest by the Federal National Mortgage Association of Federal Macs or non-mortgage-related bonds or other evidence of indebtedness of these two organizations are permitted investment vehicles. Now, and so what this does, again, Madam Speaker, is makes it technically available and legally available as individual investment vehicles and not just as part of that bond index for the retirement fund investment managers to purchase these securities as part of the fixed income securities that are allowable as investment vehicles by the retirement fund. And we buy these fixed income securities because, as you know, when we make these annuity payments to our retirees, that the contributions that are made by the existing employees are really not enough to pay for these security, I mean, to pay for these annuities. And how we're able to take the money that we have today that is less than what we're paying out now in terms of annuities is that the investments that we allow pay dividends and interest, which help then the cash flow for making up the gap between the current contributions that are made by the employees and the government of Guam. The gap between the amount of the current contributions and the annuity payment payouts by investing in investment vehicles that pay dividends and interest, such as Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. And it pays a fixed rate of interest so that we know that if we buy, for example, a million dollars' worth of Freddie Mae or Fannie Mac, Freddie Mae or Fannie Mae bonds, that we will get 8% for the next 10 years. They're fixed income, there's no fluctuation in terms of the dividend and the interest that we get paid, and that helps us plan for the payment of the gap between the contribution and the payout by investing in these investment vehicles for cash flow purposes. We make other investments to, that may have a greater yield on our investments to help pay off the unfunded liability, and those may be, may not pay fixed income, but the appreciation on that may be greater because rather than paying out, for example, dividends and payments, that they take that money, reinvest it, grow the company more, and therefore the stock value increases. And so this, again, would allow the investment managers of the retirement fund to invest in the individual securities of Freddie Mae and Fannie Mac, which are already part of the Barclays Aggregate Bond Index, which are permitted investment vehicles by the fixed income investment advisors of the retirement fund. Because the retirement fund also separates its investment managers by their philosophy. Some are for current income, and those are concentrated on fixed income vehicles. Some are for appreciation and growth, and those involve more risky investments within a tolerance level that we set in statute and pursuant to the prudent man investment rule, that we don't take undue risk and place the viability of the retirement fund for future payments by taking undue risk. So there are limitations on the risks that we're able to take by both statute as well as practice with regards to the allowable investment vehicles here. And again, this limits the investment on the fixed income securities to the Barclays Index and then allows individual purchases of everything that's in that index now to include the Freddie Mae and Fannie Mae investment vehicles. There's other government-sponsored enterprises and that receive the full faith and credit backing of the federal government. So we don't need to allow that. We don't need to be specific in that in this bill because that's already allowed. Statutes allow the investment, the retirement fund, to invest in securities and investment vehicles that receive the full federal backing of the U.S. government. So we're able to buy U.S. Treasuries, for example. We're able to buy, somebody brought up the idea of Ginny Mae's. Don't we want Ginny Mae's to be included? And Ginny Mae's are already included because, as they correctly pointed out, Ginny Mae's mortgage-backed securities, for example, do receive the full faith and credit backing of the government of Guam, I mean, the U.S. Federal Treasury. So this bill allows those two government-sponsored enterprises, federally chartered enterprises, whose debt do not receive the full faith and credit backing by statute, but by practice they do because we have seen them do it and so forth. So again, this allows greater flexibility, allows greater investment opportunity, which we plan for to ensure that we get a greater investment return of the money that we invest in the stock market for the benefit of our retirees and for the, today, as well as to ensure that we have and continue to maintain the viability and the growth of the investments of the retirement fund to meet future pension obligations to our retired government workers. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Does anybody else wish to speak on Bill 450?
No.
Speaker.
On the motion, Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker, and thank you for letting me speak on this Bill 450, as authored by the good speaker from Baragada, Speaker Pangolinen. And I stand in support of this Bill 450. And as I was looking over the committee report, Madam Speaker, and knowing the history that was, or the presentation that was presented by the good author, one of the concerns came up regarding, of course, the Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac and the concerns that happened to them in the past. And with the economic downturn and the stability of these two housing programs, where would that be? And the question, the inquiry that was made, the answer that was done by Ms. Terri Dennison, who was one of the consultants working closely with the retirement board and the retirement fund, had mentioned, unlike other programs, that when these two programs had fallen to that turmoil, the federal government had stepped up to the plate and had made it become whole and provided that financial backing to pick up on its recurring or recovering stability. And knowing that the recommendations by other marketing consultants out there saying that this bill is good, when asked what advantages it would take, reports came back that this bill, the Mercer Investment Consulting Group, believed that it will be in the best interest of the government of Guam to support and recommend its adoption, and said that it would expand the, I guess, the portfolio so that retirement can have a better opportunity to work on investment possibilities that have that federal backing and more of it. The other concern about offering other programs, as I know Senator Telo Tadegui and I were also talking about it, I'm also very hopeful that in the future, if things of other programs can come into play, that we could seriously look at it so that our retirement venture or fund venture could include other programs that exist, federal programs that exist today. So again, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of this bill, and I hope that my colleagues will support that effort. But I also want to thank the speaker, Speaker Ben Pangolinen from Baragada, for introducing this very worthwhile legislation. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you, Senator Barnes. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in the motion? Senator Pangolinen, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for their support on this bill and would like to make a motion to add Senator Tadegui as second and Senator Munia Barnes as third co-sponsor.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. So on the motion then to place Bill Number 450, let me see, was that substituted or not? No, it's not. Third reading file then, without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 463, recognize the author, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 463 originated from the Attorney General's Office Child Support Division, and of course, I conducted a public hearing. And this is arising out of the suggestion, recommendation of the Social Security Act of, which requires actually state agencies, including Guam, to utilize computer-driven technology to the maximum extent possible. And so Bill 463 actually encourages increased participation in the program. Currently, the Child Support Division of the AG's office have this program right now, the electronic deposit. At the same time, they still issue the paper payment, which is the checks, and they mail it out. The advantage of the electronic deposit is, of course, the funds is available almost within 48 hours at the latest. And also that if you don't, if one does not receive the payment within this timeframe, then of course there is immediately the alert notice, so to speak, that the payment is not forthcoming. Unlike the mailing out of the checks, it takes about a week for the custodial parent to receive it, and then maybe a few days to give it the benefit of the doubt whether there's an error in the mailing and so forth. So by the time really that a determination is made as to what happened to the payment, probably it's stretched to a 30-day. But custodial parent need, of course, the child support payment. They want it right away. So the AG's office, at the request of the federal government, actually encourages increased participation. Now, there will still continue to be an option by those who, for some reason or another, do not feel secure with their account, that they just want the check mailed directly to them. That's still provided in this bill. The way I see this bill actually is the most significant part here actually is the naming of the Guam State Disbursement Unit, which is actually the Child Support Division of the AG. And this is a federal-designated name, more or less, to be consistent with State Clearing House, Guam State Disbursement Unit, and so forth. But the practice, the program is in place, together with continuing to mail checks. During the public hearing, the Attorney General representation, actually the Attorney in Charge of Family Division and the Attorney in Charge of Child Support Division testified in length and supported the bill and the benefits of this bill. Again, it was disclosed that at least 2,000 checks a month is printed and mailed out. So there's, of course, the cost of the stamps, there's the cost of the envelope, and the error in stuffing the checks into a wrong envelope or a wrong address, probably is not so much, but still greater than the error risk of electronics. It was disclosed in response to a direct question that when they deposited electronically, actually, there is almost a matching between the account number and the name of the account holder. So that if one inputs into the electronically a wrong name, confuse the name with the account number, then it will not be accepted, the deposit will not be accepted. So there is a safety feature there to ensure that the error is very minimal. And so this is, after the public hearing, my office received, I think, five written testimony from participants, custodial parents that participated in the program, and they were very pleased with the program. Again, the highlight of this electronic deposit is the immediate, almost immediate availability of the funds and the very short time during which one can determine whether there's a problem with the payment, whether it's forthcoming or not. So the work gets underway right away if a payment through electronic is not, for example, received in 48 hours. And so I would like to move that. Bill 463 be placed on the third reading file for, you know, for purpose of discussion. I think I already presented the discussion.
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry about that.
Oh.
I still have to get used to this process, but...
No problem, Senator Palacios.
That's my presentation, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
And then that motion, Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, boy, we're going so fast. We'll probably be finished before tomorrow. But again, I want to stand and rise in support and thank the good author for presenting this legislation to this august body and truly a way of dispersing child support payments by this electronic means. And I said, as I was looking through the committee report, I said I'd be remiss if I didn't share some of the comments that came out from the written testimony. And one that comes to mind, and I know that this august body has been very, very good about doing and big advocates about going green and being environmentally safe and working to saving our trees by looking at the three Rs of reuse, reduce, and recycle. One of the letters that came out from one of the constituents in support of this measure was that the reason why she supported that was because there was a method of receiving child support that has been utilized by her since 2006. And she had broken down the eight different categories of why she felt this bill was a very good bill. And besides that going green effort and saving a lot of trees out there, she said that this type of transaction ensures the security of funds. This type... This type of transaction provides conveniences, the funds are received in a very timely manner, almost immediately. And this constituent noted that she didn't have to, or he didn't have to worry about checking the checks that were, that used to be mailed out, and about it being delayed, stolen, misrouted, or even damaged. And as you know, in the past, Madam Speaker, that with the Child Support Division and discrepancies that have happened in the past, it has been unfortunate that we had to go through that kind of trial and tribulation, and that this bill is a very good way of making sure that what the wrongs that have happened in the past will not happen again. It was also noted that it would save on gas because they didn't have to go to, drive to their nearest post office, wherever their post office is located at, to go check the mail to see if their checks came in. And they don't have to incur any bank fees, bank statements, that it was automatic, that they were able to monitor the funds that come in almost on a daily basis, and that they could do that by phone or going online by the Internet. Of course, again, getting creative through the electronic Internet process, and another new technology that has come to play within the last decade. It saves the government a lot of time, a lot of money, and knowing that the tracking system is almost automatic, as soon as the documentation or the reports of the funding gets inputted right away, gets dispersed to that constituents or to the constituents, to the receivers, it's automatically inputted, reporting process is already almost automatic. And then again, on the last attempt, it was saying going green, it was something that has been visioned by everybody within the nation, was we look, we need to look at environmentally preserving our island, making sure that what the good Heavenly Father has given to us, and as far as what we breathe, what we use, the pristine beauty that has been given to us, that we need to be able to protect it, and going green is something that all of us need to advocate for. And as I was reading this committee report, Madam Speaker, I was really tickled that somebody could read, that this bill really provides all the common sense efforts and steps to make it good, not just for the government, but for the community and those having to receive this kind of payment. So, I want to congratulate and thank the author for this very, very good bill, and I hope my colleagues will support this effort because I truly will support it. Sido Smase.
Thank you, Senator Munia Barnes. Are there any other speakers in the motion? Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise not so much as to oppose the bill because I think it definitely has the potential to be good and to achieve the good things. I rise because I'm still uncertain about some of the issues surrounding this process that will we, will now make mandatory. Everybody seems to agree that it's a good way of dispersing the child support payments. It's a quicker way, it's a more green way, sure. But we don't know why parents aren't taking advantage of it. This is not a new program, this electronic transfer. Initially, it was required that you go to one single bank to get electronic transfer of child support payments. And so, when they put that program in place and people didn't take advantage of it, the supposition was that, well, even though everybody knows this is a really good thing, the reason why parents aren't taking advantage of it is because you've got to close your bank account at the bank you usually bank, and open one up with this one particular bank, and people don't want to use that. They want the option of banking at different banking institutions. And so, that's why we can't get the parents to cooperate and enter into this electronic benefits transfer and electronic transfer of these child support payments. And so, we knew, or at least we thought we knew, why people weren't taking advantage of it, and therefore, we made a change, or the Attorney General's Office made a change. So, the Attorney General said, "We think this is the reason why. It's too inconvenient, single bank, people like the bank that they bank with, and they don't want to have two different bank accounts, or they don't want to close theirs at one institution and open it with this one." So, they expanded the program. And now, they allow any bank to participate. So, now, you don't have to go to one particular bank, you don't have to open a new bank account, you can just say, "Deposit it into my existing bank account." And we thought that was going to cure it, that this process is so good and so convenient that nobody's going to want to do it any other way. Once again, we find that's not the case, that somehow, we're still not able to increase the participation in this electronic transfer of these child support payments. So, something else, we know now that the initial assumption of it's too inconvenient going to one bank and so forth is not the case, that we thought that if we cured that problem, everybody would just jump on it. But it hasn't happened. We don't know why people are not taking advantage of electronic transfer of child support payments. Yet, even not knowing why they're not doing it, we're going to force everyone into this program now because it's mandatory, and it'll be the rare exception that you will be able to be issued a check. It'll be the exception rather than the rule. So, I'm a little uncomfortable forcing people to do something that I don't know why they don't want to do it. And so, we asked, of course, the Attorney General's Office, "Why? Why don't we do a flyer or a handout?" And they said they've made it so convenient. They've gone to the different organizations. They have enrollments with the different banks at the malls on outreach days where they tell you why. They sent it out, they sent out why electronic transfers are so much better than paper checks in the checks that they mailed out. They attached this flyer. Yet, even with these kind of effort, people still resist doing it, and we don't know why. Yet, we're going to force them to go into this program. That's the discomfort I have. There might be other reasons. What if we know that the reason why you have child support is as a result of divorce? So, the relationship didn't survive. And so, now you've got a custodial parent who may be in another relationship with somebody else. And we all know the kind of relationships, you know, people enter into, none of it's perfect. What if the reason why they don't want to do it is because their boyfriend has access to their bank account? And if it goes directly into that bank account, the boyfriend can now take this child support payment, which is meant to support the child, and use it for something else because he can write checks against that bank account. What if that's the reason, and we just don't know it, and people don't want to step up and say, "I don't want because of this case," and therefore, you're going to force now the deposit of that money in there, in which other people may have access to that account. We all have joint checking accounts. We all have, you know, opportunities where we're not the only ones with access to our money. So, again, it's the discomfort of not knowing exactly why, or even generally why, not exactly, but generally why, this is such a good system, it works elsewhere, why our residents don't think it's a good thing or good enough to enroll? And not knowing those, I feel uncomfortable forcing everyone to participate in that. And so, that's, and it's not to say that I may not vote for the bill, it's just, I'm trying to reconcile that, and I'm trying to ensure, and I think the author did provide for the exceptions. But if, you know, there's 10,000 child support payments, and we're going to grant exceptions to 8,000 of them or 5,000 of them, then maybe it shouldn't be the exception, it should be the rule. And so, I understand, and I commend the author for providing that opportunity to file a hardship. But again, that puts our people through a process that, you know, for them requires more bureaucracy in order to get what they want. And I don't know that I'm very comfortable doing that. The other thing that I noticed, which I don't recall in the original bill, which I'm sure there was, but I did not during the hearing ask it because it didn't dawn on me, is that now we're saying, not only is the distribution going to be electronic and automated, but so is the collection. What does that mean? What does the collection of these child support payments must be automated? What does that mean? So, now, does that mean that if I work for a company, that company has to have electronic transfer capability in their checking account or banking account? And now, does it, has to electronically transfer the money that they hold back from the child support of the wages of that employee that they have and transfer it, transfer it to the AG's office account or the Department of Administration's account that they write these child support payments against? Now, does that have to be electronic, and they can't mail in a check that says, "Here's the child support payment that we took from the wages of employee A, B, and C. Now I have to electronically transfer that? I can't mail you a check?" Again, I didn't notice that, I didn't ask the question, what does that mean? That now that is the only acceptable way of companies complying with the law? Because we are requiring these companies to withhold the wages of these employees through their place of employment, and then remit that to the AG's office or DOA account for deposit into the account of the supportive parent, the parent that is charged with paying child support. Can we now, again, I don't know what that means because I just, I didn't notice it, I didn't ask the question, but I'm assuming that now the collection also must be by automated process, electronic transfer, and so forth. And does everybody have that capability? Does every, is there an additional cost to that company for doing that? I don't know that. It may be less than the paper check, and that may be a good thing, and all these companies are going to be happy with that this is now required. So, those are some of the issues I have. I raised those same issues during the public hearing process, so it's not, you know, it's not that they haven't heard my concerns on this. And it's very obvious that both the author and the Attorney General's Office, in our discussion during the public hearing, were concerned about some of these same issues. And they have made some accommodations, as the good author had mentioned, that there is a hardship. But now, it has to be a hardship. If it's not a hardship, then you can't get a paper check. And I'm not sure that, again, without generally knowing why people aren't doing something that we all say is good for them, and then now we're going to force them. It's like knowing me, you know? I know that exercise is good for me, I know I've got to lose weight, I'm being told I have to, but now you're going to force me to exercise.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure that we want to go that route, Madam Speaker. I may just rebel. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank my colleagues and the author for listening to my concerns during the public hearing, making some of the accommodations for those concerns. I'm very truly appreciative of that, and continue to debate and look at these issues as we continue discussion on this bill. Sido Smase.
Thank you, Senator Panglinen. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Palacios, an opportunity for you to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Before I forget, I move that Senator Munia Barnes would be a second co-sponsor of this bill, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Yeah. Madam Speaker, of course, I listened to the comments of the last speaker, but if you look at page two, these striking lines, those are already existing. And even if this bill were to not pass, right there, the department is designated as the Guam Child Support Disbursement Unit, the department shall use automated procedures for the collection and disbursement of child support payments. So, actually, the, from line 12 down, it's actually merely a repetition of that, a reinstatement. Like I said earlier in my opening remark, that I think the nuance here is that the fact that now we have a, the Child Support Division of the AG is designated as the state disbursement unit. So, that is adopting, of course, the federal designated name. And again, the requirement for electronic direct deposit is already existing, it's just, I guess, this is more or less an acknowledgement. On line three, page one, it says, section 45B, 454B of the Social Security Act, requires that state agencies, including Guam, use automated procedures, electronic processes, and code-driven technologies to the maximum extent possible, and efficient and economical for the collection and disbursement of child support payment, including procedures to ensure prompt disbursement of the custodial parent's share of any payments. I really cannot see any other new thing here other than the naming of the state agency. Again, there is still the option, if you look at page, line 18 on line two, on page two, line 18, if no account is designated, the deputy of the Child Support Division or the deputy designated shall inform the state disbursement unit which method to use. And it was made clear that they would still use the mailing out. Again, it, the absolute mandatory of electronic deposit is not, perhaps by the adoption of this, it, maybe the most, it encourages increased participation, but there is still, of course, the option to not enroll in that, and I share the sentiments of the last speaker. Sometimes there are accounts that only I want to know. Of course, I don't have a secret account right now, but I know of people who personally have secret accounts. So, those are valid considerations, and for those, of course, the AG will consider those. And again, automated procedures for collection, we didn't ask that. I mean, I can only say that maybe I authorized for the automatic deduction from me to pay over, that's the only thing that I can remember, but a family business that I know actually cut a check and transmit over to the AG's office, and from there, of course, then they deposited it into whatever's the funding, and then they... But maybe this is just to allow, I guess, for those options to be available so that I can go ahead and authorize for automatic deduction, you know? But it's really not a very substantial, substantive amendment contained herein, and I asked that my colleague, you know, I guess, considered the request of the Attorney General's Office and staff, both, of course, the division in charge and of the child support and the family, family division. And based on that, perhaps, I asked my colleague to support this bill. And I asked that it be moved on to the third reading file for voting. Madam Speaker.
On the motion then to send Bill Number 466 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. No, 66? Oh, I'm sorry. So, on the motion then to send Bill instead, 463, to the third reading file without any objections. No objections enter this one. Thank you very much. 463, so. Yes, so the next bill is, let me see, 466, and I, do you want to do that now, Senator Palacios, or tomorrow? You want to do 466 tomorrow morning? Okay, so we're going to recess until tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. Okay, 10 o'clock tomorrow morning. Okay, 10 o'clock tomorrow morning.